So, thank you again and welcome to the Central School District Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and return it to the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional input in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process is outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the District Office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication and if so, what avenue is preferred. Thank you again for your attendance at this meeting of the Central School Board. And at that point, we're at adoption of the agenda.
Yeah, we have one just addition into our business agenda. There is an approval of a travel by the high school and so Dr. Jobe and I believe Mr. White will be quickly addressing us to share that information with us in our, in the business, business portion of the agenda. That's the only change.
Okay. With no other changes there...
Oh, I apologize. And just to clarify that we do not have CHS Azbek here today, correct? So, that is also the other change.
Correct. So, we're gonna start with the report from the CHS Power Pillars Group.
Please feel free to grab a third chair there if you would like.
So, we just wanna give you guys an update on our class. So, on our last school video lesson, we worked on work ethic and we tightened our trauma informed concept of flipping your lid. This feature whenever students Jake, Jason Erickson, Erickson, where he introduced Dr. Bruce's Perry's concept of flipping your lid using your hand as a model. So, the hand is kinda represents your parts of your brain and how that affects like the way you think, the way you feel and like what to do when you're like stressing out. So, and then they, as a, the activity, they also listed four things that they could do to calm themselves when they're beginning to flip their lid and when they finish, they would give them gummies.
And on March 13, 13 to 14, a group of our class presented at the Lines for Life Suicide Prevention Conference in Portland. We shared our loan, loan video and answered questions about our class and the work we're doing at CHS to create mental health awareness and regulating tools for more trauma informed work and other resources for our students and staff. Our students who attended the conference also had the opportunity to attend informative sessions about suicide prevention.
On March 23rd, we had our annual school-wide celebration. It was a great success. We included new activities, a craft station and the scavenger hunt throughout the school. The pantry is going very well. We had over 100 students using the pantry each month and we will be picking up additional food tomorrow from the Ella Karan Food Bank. Tom is just going to be sharing our loan video with all the students and staff. So, we put together an introduction video and supplies for them. They will be sharing the video later this week. We are currently working on our empathy video for April and planning an overnight retreat for May that will be funded through the Trauma Informed Grant. On the retreat, we will focus on building relationships, teamwork and discussing ways to continue helping our staff and students understand how stress impacts learning.
And then when our last, we didn't put it on there, but we have, this Saturday, we have Abby's Closet, which is an opportunity for young women to participate. And we're gonna be taking a bus to Portland so people, so young ladies can go and pick up a free prom dress. So, they get a free prom dress, accessories and shoes. So, it's a really good opportunity. And that's basically our update. Thank you.
Don't leave yet. Hey, girls. So, you wanna comment about anything else you know that's going on at the high school since there's nobody from Azbek? Maybe you and Miss Jobe can say something? You know anything going on?
Well, we have Mr. and Ms. Pageant coming up on the 14th, which is a very, very good deal. The students have been doing fundraising...
Dr. Jobe, can you come to the front for me, please?
Yes. I just realized I was being stupid.
So, we should've posted the idea with her to prompt the girls, but they got out of the seat too fast.
Well, they did. One of the exciting things coming up is the Mr. and Ms. Pageant. And that's a major fundraiser that the kids do in the community for children with serious medical needs. It's a community event that's fun, inspirational. We have, I think, I think there are 12 senior teams that, a boy and a girl on each team. It's, it's a lot of fun. So, that's a week from Saturday.
And if you haven't attended that, it's an awesome event.
It is. It really is. It really showcases what our kids can do for a noble cause. It's excellent.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. So, communications for the floor, nothing. So, do we have a CEA rep?
Can I pass these out first? Is that fine?
Yeah, sure can.
Okay. I'm a first year teacher at MES and I teach first grade. So, we just made, Jason couldn't be here, but we worked on just like a quick little update about what's been going great at MES in the last month and starting in this month. So, we've been working on cooperation as our life skill and some of the things that we focused on. We created this huge poster that had different pieces to it and each grade got a piece of it. And then we built it all together throughout all the grades. And it said like, "Together, we do so much more than we can alone." And it was super cute. So, it's posted all over the school and the kids thought that was really fun to get to work with the older grades and the older kids liked to work with the younger grades. Another thing we did was our Read-a-Thon and we surpassed our goal. We read over 110,000 minutes as a school, which was incredible. And the mayor partnered with us and he donated one penny for every minute we read up to 20,000 minutes. And then he came to the assembly and he dumped out these huge boxes of pennies and let the kids come up and help them into this giant bucket and it was just a fiasco in like the best way. They had so much fun with it. So, they were really excited about that. And then a big thing we've been focusing on is reteaching our swim expectations and that's save students, working responsibly and control and making good choices. So, our tag students partnered with some of our kids in the primary grades that need a little bit more encouragement and just that extra support on reteaching those and they made a new video for us that we'll be reviewing soon. And then we also earned those swim tickets as reinforcers and we earned so many that tomorrow, there's the Sports Matter Team is coming to our school to do a big juggling assembly. And then they're taking each of the classes and doing grade-wide PE classes with them. And then they're hosting a night tomorrow for the parents to bring their kids back to for more activities, which is awesome. Today, we also re-taught our expectations by having the staff rotate. So, we all got to go to different classrooms and teach the expectations. Most of us went to the grade below us so that we could see some of the kids we might have next year, which was really fun. And then I just put like a section of special grade shout-outs of the different teachers that sent me things. So, in first grade, right before spring break, we did a poetry slam for our unit. And so, the students wrote their own poems and made programs and invitations to parents. And we served tea and crackers and we had 89% of our parents come to support our kids, which was awesome. And then second grade, for their GLAD unit, went to just all the different types of community jobs around and got to take tours and they said it was like some of the best learning they'd seen their kids do yet. Thought it was really informative and fun and it was good to get in the community. And then third grade, did a great earthquake simulation and the kids got to build things and try to shake them and they had like a big simulation and that was really fun, too. Any questions about that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So, is there anybody from the last year? I don't see Denise. Nope. No administrative reporters. We're down to C's.
Gosh, and I wish I could take more time, but enclosed is your financial summary. And it is the appropriation summary. So, as you can see, there's nothing in the negative. That's the good news. And we are looking towards sort of slowing down spending, right? This time of year, we wanna make sure that we are maximizing our carry forward, that we have our bills paid by June 30th, since we are on a cash basis. So, we will start asking buildings to kinda plan ahead, make sure that all of that spending is in. But so far, we are on budget and no concerns about making those year-end purchases. The other thing I mentioned was the high school roof. And after our sort of initial estimate by our engineer about a million dollar roof replacement, we called, we had, had asked him to try to prioritize and we've been waiting for that report for a couple of months to say, "Could you triage it, right? Is the worst part, the first 300,000 or won't that buy us anything or where are we?" And what he basically suggested is that right now, even if we were to try to get bids on a roof replacement, that we could expect either no one to bid on it or if we did have anyone bid on it, it would probably be at least 160% of what estimates would be. That's what he's finding as he advises other clients right now. Commercial construction is just sucking all the life out of everything and really trying to get bids to do that project, he thought we would not be in a great position because it is a small job. To me, that usually means there's somebody out there looking for that quick job they can kinda put in, but the engineer doesn't see that in the marketplace. So, we are now actually getting some other bids on a solution he thinks will get us by another two to three years. So, we are looking at that. That's more in the 45,000 to 50,000 dollar range. As we get towards the end of the year, seeing how our other expenses go, could be out of our general fund maintenance expenses or it could come out of the maintenance contingency. They'll be have just poor things like this. But hopefully, we are finally nailing that down. We actually were able to get one leak that has eluded us for a couple of years and that is down in our shop at the high school. And we had roofers up there, I don't know, a dozen times since I've been here. Couldn't find it. David Mike, Dave Dodson at Mike Coast checked to the rescue. They finally got up there, their hands and knees in the rain trying to figure it out. They found the spot where water was getting in and they were able to re-flap some things and seal. So, we're doing what we can to try to keep that thing along.
Can I quote right on?
I was just gonna ask it. Is there anything new or different that they can try this time? Cause we've done something similar this...
Right. We've done some sealing ourselves. This is, they, they suggest that if we do two or three layers this time, that it actually, we can cross-strengthen it enough that we can probably keep it, like I said, they said that's a three, two to three year solution at best.
Do you have a cost potentially on what fix would be down the road instead of just kind of taking it?
Well, yeah, the, the fix is to replace every bit of roof that wasn't replaced in the remodel. And that's about a million dollars, except right now in construction cost, it's a million three, a million four, if we could get bids at all. So, hopefully, we can wait till things cool down a little bit.
And I think, again, as we look at putting the facility committee, as we've talked about, I think that just becomes part of our conversation as we move forward in looking at those pieces. That's all I have. Other questions?
Just because I know you expect me to ask a number, the, this is actually an education question for me. Capital Improvement Fund, refresh my memory, what that's for?
Okay. Sure. The Capital Improvement Fund, which is towards the bottom of that report, it's Fund 402. And that is money that we get from the Construction Excise Tax that we have levied against new construction, both residential and commercial. Any additional square footage or new square footage, it's like this systems development charge for the cities and counties. Builders have to pay us a construction excise fee. And that can only be used for capital expenses and not roofs, unfortunately. So, it is about added capacity. We can use it for debt service, for example. So, we could use it to pay down, pay into the, the fund sinking fund, we call it, that we have to pay off our full faith and credit bond, the $2 million bond that was taken out to try to finish the high school project. But basically, yeah, we can't use it for a roof.
And so, do we carry that forward until we have a project?
We do. Right. It was, we had planned to use it as part of the bond project, had the bond passed. That was part of our funding. Our match for the funding, basically, would've included that, that expended, that capital expenditure.
So, what are the two different account numbers there?
So, the 2,000s are like, if we had to, had to get architects or services, we had to hire people to do any professional work for us and then the 500,000 would be a cost of acquiring land or acquiring, you know, or additions. For example, if we needed to get portables, we could consider that because it's to increase capacity. So, if we needed to buy a new portable classroom, for example. So, we, we wanna appropriate some just in case.
Okay.
In case an opportunity comes along that we can't pass up. We haven't had any of those, except the opportunity to fix the roof.
Is this where the roof, two roofs come like this?
It is, Jerry. Yep, exactly. It is right where the old roof matches up with the new roof.
Took their lessons from the city, moved and built the bathroom over there.
Oh, yeah.
Roof comes into the middle.
Uh-huh. Yeah. And it leaks down the center instead of out on the edges. Yeah. That's good stuff.
We are at your report.
Well, I am excited and I'm gonna have her sort of walk up here and take a seat for me. I am excited to finally, really publicly, at our Board Meeting to introduce our new high school principal, Ms. Donna Servigna. She is here with us today. Before I start that, I do wanna acknowledge one, obviously, being the first, in my first year as a superintendent, I want to just acknowledge the, the work that Dr. Jobe has done, not only this year, but really the last two and a half years with an amazing high school team of students and staff and just what they have continued to push forward with in developing a positive in culture and climate, really working together as a staff, partnering with our students and, and having those, those to really start to build those systems in place. So, I just want to acknowledge that because I remember as I was, this time of year and realizing, oh my goodness, am I, in this process, gonna have to become a new superintendent and at the same time, hire a new high school principal. I was glad to have Jan stay on with us. So, I think she has put us in a really, really amazing place, obviously with her team of staff involved in that and our students. But I'm excited to introduce our new principal. Since the first meeting we had in here and watching, I'm a big believer in how you build teams, watching her work, one of the first activities we did for the initial round of interviews is, we didn't actually do a traditional interview. We actually had them, the entire candidates work in two different teams. And then we had staff around, I'll say assessing, the conversations and those types of things and just, she stood out, did a really good job in her interviews. I had the opportunity after the formal interviews, met with her, with a, with a couple of my staff at the District Office. Her reflection, just the day after, the conversations with the staff and going through that process impressed me. Jan and I had the opportunity to go up and have even a more intentional conversation with her a few days after that as well. I say Jan and her had the conversation. I just observed in that process and added a few things here and there as we really solidified that she was gonna be our, our candidate. So, I'm excited to introduce her. I've asked her to just say a little bit about herself. She is coming from Century High School in the Hillsboro area. But ladies and gentlemen, our new and future principal at Central High School, Donna Servigna.
So, I first wanna say, I was really excited to listen to you guys speak tonight and hear from what's going on from the student perspective. And one of the things that I'm drawn to Central about is the work that you're doing with Trauma Informed Care. And so, I was really thrilled when you started talking about flipping lids and like, that's amazing work that you guys are doing as students. So, thank you for sharing. This is my 18th year as an educator, serving students in Oregon. And I'm really excited to come and join this team. Jen mentioned in our interviews that this is a gem of a school district and the more that I find out about the work that's going on here, the more thrilled I am to be, come part of the team here, leading a high school. There are three areas that I'm really, really passionate about. One is AVID, one is Trauma Informed Care and one is working in improving CTE and programs. And so, I'm excited about what's happening and helping those programs grow and flourish for the students at Central.
Questions? Any questions for her? I mean, you're gonna get time here, but I figured if anyone has any questions, feel free.
I met a few of you at the show the other night, which is a fantastic show. So, it was nice to see some faces.
No questions? Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Nice seeing you.
Nice to meet you all.
That's it for me. Short and sweet. Important, important work.
Okay. So, with my report. So, upcoming board activities. Our next Board Meeting is on May 7th and we've got a budget meeting on the 16th and one on May 21st. We have a PLC meeting on the 9th at 6 o'clock, which is next, next Monday night. And everybody received a letter, which is a duplicate to the superintendent's letter and Paul Evans and his chief of staff are gonna be here talking for the first, I told them they have 15 minutes to give us a report. So, basically to follow along what, what you received in that letter.
What is it?
So, you got a letter on the table that talks about...
On Monday.
Yeah.
On the 9th.
The PLC meeting.
That's part of the PLC.
And so, it talks about upcoming stuff at the legislature. You just wanted to keep us informed and hear some input and stuff. Everybody has a paper in front of them about year-end reflection. Please fill it out. Remember to sign your name to it and give it to Andrea.
It's the yellow sheet. We're just trying to see if we can find a date.
And make sure you put your name on it.
For our retreat. Well, hey, you know me, I might put you to work. So, that's, there's part of that. We're just trying to see if we can find a, a half of day to be able to do a retreat for the, really the end of the year and then really building into next year.
Yeah.
And then looking potentially at that point to an August date for a retreat as well.
And we have graduation coming up in June and the OSBA Conference in July. If you wanna go, you need to let the superintendent and Andrea know so that those reservations can be made ahead of time. And am I forgetting anything?
What's the date of graduation this year? Is it the first?
Graduation is...
The 8th.
I think it's the first Friday in June.
8th.
That's what's on my calendar. June 8th. Oh, yes, Mr. Love probably has that.
Has it engraved in it.
Yes. So, that is on the 8th.
That all I have?
Yep.
Did I forget anything? So, we are on to the consent agenda. So, with that, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Is the health standards and stuff presentation by Dory, that's not on the consent agenda?
That's in our business section.
Okay. Am I correct in assuming there is no personnel recommendation?
Correct, for this month.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Say it again.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Now, we're at the business agenda.
So, I'm gonna begin and have either Mr. White or as well, Dr. Jobe to come forward just to give us a quick information or both.
Or both.
Information about the, the trips that we need to approve for travel.
Thank you for the last minute addition to the agenda tonight. I really appreciate that. I'm pleased to inform you tonight that once again, Oregon's only academic decathlon team and therefore, repeat state champion academic decathlon.
And a state championship is a state championship.
Well, you know, because we are the only ones, our first year, they paired us off against Idaho. And what that resulted in is several Central students becoming Idaho state champions in some of our various subjects. Idaho lost interest in competing with us. So, the last time, they paired us off against Washington and that didn't go well for them either. So, I don't know why anyone else in Oregon doesn't wanna start a team, but I'm starting to understand why they might want to. So, yeah, with your permission, we would like to send a team to the national competition this year held in Frisco, Texas. We have nine students and four chaperones who are really going along. We're gonna be leaving quite early in the morning on the 18th of April, returning in the middle of the night on the 21st. So, we'll have a couple of travel days, two days to compete, one day to pick up our awards and run to the airport and come home. I mean, you know, if we do well. We tend to do pretty well, though. So, it's something you should definitely be proud of. These students have worked very hard. The District supported us initially by loaning us more money than they should have and it took us longer than it should have to pay it back. But I'm happy to say that after having sold a billion candy bars, 5,000 donuts last month and a couple of other things that I didn't wanna get into, thank you, Mr. Mosier, I appreciate the support, wouldn't need to talk about that now. We have enough money to do this on our own. We have enough money in our academic decathlon account. I remember the first day that there was a, in the black. And then I remember, we have a lot of that, it's plenty of fun. And then, yeah. And then I remember the, the day we had a comma in our account. And now, we don't anymore. And that's okay. But they paid for their own plane tickets and they paid for their hotel rooms and they paid for the competition fee that's supposed to keep schools like us out. And I just could not be prouder of their hard work. They just, they cannot be stopped. And the hard work they put in, they meet twice a week after school and they study and they learn from each other. And they have teachers come in and give demonstrations on the various subjects that they have to study. This year's theme is Africa. So, they're learning a lot about Africa. We have to read a book and we have to discuss all these themes. Four pound packets for us to have to try to internalize. It's just phenomenal to, to me to see how the students that are in academic decathlon performing my advanced placement classes. They come in there with such a different perspective, the way that their essays take off, just phenomenal. So, I would like to request your permission to send them along. I've got a big stack of paperwork here to submit and thank you for that. So, there you go. Oh, yeah, thank you. So, the 7th and 8th of April, we are having a huge garage sale at the high school. The cafeteria fills up with an amazing amount of stuff. So, if you have a garage that has some things that needs to be gotten rid of, let us know. I have a 2005 Subaru that can haul nearly 100 pounds and it will come get things. So, that's, that's good. You know, one of the things I'm proud of is the outreach part of academic decathlon. In years past, we have a huge amount of used clothes that are put out there and a lot of folks who are on very tight budgets show up. And a lot of folks who are on very tight budgets show up. And our deal is it's $5 for however many clothes you can get into a paper bag. Some of those bags, yeah, they have some pretty heavy ones coming out of there. But I'm really happy about that. It's a chance for the school to really interact with our community in a very positive way. So, I want to add that. Now, a good time for the other thing, you think? Now's a good time for the other thing, she thinks.
It's just something that I wanted to tell you about, but I thought it was better if you told me about it. It's quick.
So, one of the reasons I was really happy about going to work at Central was an Oregon history class. And any administrator that would come close, I would whisper it in their shell-like ear. Until eventually, somebody listened. And we are now in our first year of having an Oregon history class. The only class of its kind taught at any secondary school in the state, as far as I'm aware, public or private. And it has been the joy of my career. Showing students some basic historiography skills, letting them pick a topic that means something to them, and then just getting out of their way has been truly inspirational. I developed their portfolios along National History Day guidelines to really put some oomph into the curriculum. And our students did well enough to where we were invited to compete at the Oregon History Day Regional Competition in Medford, Oregon. I'd never done one of those before, but we got a bus, maybe a little later, applied for it, it should have been. And we went down there with 15 students against a very affluent, private school that's used to having things their way. I think their ACT averages are higher than, well, it's a pretty good school. And really quickly, you know, as quickly as I can, because we have a couple people right here that were on that trip. So, of the 15 people that we sent down, let me read some of the results. It'll just take a second. In the exhibit category, Zachary Thompson took first place. In the exhibit category, Alondra Garcia took second place. In the performance category, Gracie Brown took first place. In the performance category, Cassidy Nelson with her Mapping Conflict and Compromise entry took second place. In the website category, Elizabeth Leon took first place. In the group exhibit category, Rosalinda Essencio and Jocelyn Calvillo took first place. In the essay category, Going Away, Central's Victor Ochoa in the essay competition was flat-out amazing. He's one of, I think we have nine kids that are going to be going to Portland, May 5th, to compete at the state competition. And I'd like to read the essay that's better than Victor's. It's incredible. And it's about our town. So, there you go. I just wanted to let you know that as well. And to thank Dr. Jove for those frantic last-minute, oh my God, how does this work sessions. She's pretty good at this. And I'm going to miss her. So, thank you.
I just want to remind you guys that you're the ones that approved the Oregon history course last spring. And we knew it was going to be an amazing course because it's not like any history course that any of us have ever taken. It is, it is a shining star. So, thank you for approving it.
Yes, thank you.
So, do I hear a motion to approve their trip? Move and second. All those in favor, say, raise your right hand. Go forth and have a good trip. I just know what the results are.
I think we probably will.
I think you'll be on the agenda next month, I'm pretty sure.
I'm sure that we can make that happen.
Bring pictures.
Next is just, we do have a budget committee appointment. And so, in your packet, that was on the table this evening. One of the committee members, which is really a reappointment, is Rachel Dabercow. Dabercow? 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 So, she has put in for Zone 7 of the Budget Committee. I know she has been a part of the committee. See, she is not here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. She has put in and would like to be considered again for that position. I think it's 5.
It doesn't matter now because no one applied by the deadline. So, if we had anyone who would like to serve on the Budget Committee, we can appoint at large.
I want to say it was Zone 3 and Zone 5.
Yeah.
I think that is correct.
Yeah, we had, Steve Milligan had to vacate his zone because he became a school district employee. So, he had to vacate as an appointed Budget Committee member, 1 of 5. Anyway, but we can appoint at large if anybody wants to. If you know of anyone who would like to get in on the process, we would appreciate that. We would probably have, we would convene the board before the budget meeting to appoint them officially.
So, do I hear a motion to accept Rachel's application? Move and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. So, Rachel's reappointed and we're still needing two, right?
Yeah, either one. My sophomore sees, will work.
Yeah, Aurelia and I can contact people.
All right, now, I'm just going to have Dr. Vickery come forward. We are going to, and then I know she has a few guests that they want to work their way towards the front as well if there are questions. We are in the year to, or in the process of developing and, excuse me, not developing, to adopt a new health curriculum adoption. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Vickery to start. I think this is an important adoption. You all have talked, heard me talk about the development of the whole child. And part of that is really focusing on kids that they are healthy, they're safe, they're engaged, they're supported and challenged. And I think, as you will hear today, with the adoption and the curriculum that we are looking at, it starts to really look in all of those areas when you talk about safety of relationships, healthy relationships, when it comes to addressing things of bullying and cyberbullying. I know I shared with all of you in one of the Friday reports, some links to the curriculum. I know, one of you for sure came down and looked at the curriculum in detail. So, again, I'm going to turn it over to them, but I do think they have done a fantastic job of some of the next steps that we need to do with the health curriculum moving forward so our students can be successful from that whole development approach. So, Dr. Vickery, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, good evening. And we're here to talk about the health curriculum adoption. If you'll remember back in January, I presented on Division 22. And one of the areas that we were out of compliance was human sexuality education. We still need to have our K-12 comprehensive plan, but this adoption for grades 6 through 12 moves us in that right direction because it does align with the required organ content standards. And that also includes Aaron's Law, which we talked about a year ago. And also to remind you that our health adoption for K-5 was the Great Body Shop, and we've already completed that. But this year, the cycle came up for health adoption formally through the state. And Perry had contacted me and said, hey, I have a teacher here who is looking for some administrative experience. Can she help you with this? And it's, I love delegating. And it was one of those opportunities that I could hand off to Ms. Alicia Bowen here and say, this is great experience for you, take it and run with it. So, I'm going to let these two go ahead and explain the process as they are on the adoption committee as secondary health teachers.
Dory, or Dr. Vickery, real quickly, can you just give a quick Aaron's Law, just so in case people don't have that definition?
Senate bill, I think it was 852, went through. And it is around teaching our children to protect themselves against sexual abuse. Having ways of reporting, who are safe people, proper body space, way to say no, who do you communicate to, that is all required by law now. And we needed to move in the direction that we are teaching our students about personal safety. When it comes to their relationships.
Thank you. So, we got to take a team over to the ESD, which had what they call a Health Curriculum Caravan, which was where they bring in all of the state-approved vendors. And they have their whole curriculum team available. So, they take us through all of their textbooks, their online material, all their supplemental material, anything that they have that we would use to teach the curriculum. So, we got to sit through three or four of them. And we finally had decided on the one that we're going for. We thought that it was easiest for teachers to navigate. It provided the most amount of material and information for us to go forward towards our standards. And then, we thought just overall, it provided a great internet-type curriculum, which we're trying to move forward just because it keeps us up to date. And it also allows our students to fill out interactive material online and submit to teachers that way as well, which we think moving forward will be beneficial for our kids.
You're going to, I appreciate that she says that. One of the things that Dr. Vickery and I have the conversation all the time as we talk about the adoption of curriculum in the future, a lot of times when we buy textbooks in less than a year, those are out to date. And so, you're seeing some change in more of the interactive web-based types of licensing. So, this is going to give us that first opportunity to really see what that is like in our health curriculum and how we implement that throughout the 6 through 12. So, again, I think this is a good first step as we see that change starting to happen across education in regards to curriculum adoptions.
And also to mention that one portion of the 612 health adoption is on human sexuality. And I asked Sherri Higgins to come and speak as the Talmage teacher, just around communication with parents, because we know that is a concern. And I wanted to make sure that we address that. And I wanted to give her a few minutes to share what that, what her process is at Talmage.
The process at Talmage is we send home a syllabus and it outlines what we'll teach. It's a 6th and 7th grade syllabus. And it gives parents my phone number, my contact information. It lays it out. And they do have to sign it and return it. And so, it has the state standards in it, along with general information about grading, if you're absent, all that. And there's a portion that the parents can go through and let me know if they have concerns. If they have concerns, they usually call me. Believe it or not, not very many parents have concerns about the Human Growth and Development Unit specifically. If they do, they oftentimes, I'll meet with them and we'll walk through it. I let them know that they can opt out. They could opt out of that one specific unit or they could opt out of the whole class. Usually, only one case in my 17 years at Talmage has a parent opted out completely of the Human Growth and Development Unit, not of the whole health curriculum. So, usually when I sit down with them, I take them through what we currently have or what we currently do. And let them see the materials, let them ask questions, and oftentimes, they're okay with it. And I also let them know that during class, if a student feels uncomfortable, and I also tell the students this, that they can let me know. And they can always exit the classroom or I'll give them something to do outside of the classroom.
So, the curriculum that we're putting forth is for adoption for 612 is Glencoe through McGraw-Hill. And we have worked with McGraw-Hill in the past. It is a company that has been excellent and responsive to us in a timely manner with materials that we need. We've had some glitches with ordering. They've been very responsive to come back to us and get us the materials that we originally ordered. And so, we're putting this forth for adoption tonight. Questions?
With assumption to the presentation at the ESD, what process was used to determine the adoption of this curriculum? And who was involved in that process?
So, we took a team of us. There was one from the high school and then two from the middle school. And then, we all sat through all of the presentations and were able to ask questions and go through the material. And then afterwards, we debriefed together and talked about things that we thought would benefit us and what fit our culture at Central. Through that, we thought this best fit our needs and hit all the standards.
Who was part of that team?
Kendra Gregory at the high school and then Sherri and myself.
I think it's very important that when we do adoptions, that the teachers have a major voice in this. They're the ones that are on the grounds. And so, as we started this process and Dory shared with me the approach, I think that's what we need to continue to do in those pieces because they're the ones that are going to be implementing on the day-to-day approach.
I have more questions. Sure. Did it enter the public review process? And if so, how was that advertised?
It did. We had put out an automated phone message system to all of our parents, grades 5 through 12. Let them know that we had displayed the curriculum here at the district office. We did it for a week, the week before spring break through our business hours here. And so, we have the curriculum on display. And they filled out a little questionnaire if they had any questions or comments that they wanted to submit for us to consider as well.
And then, also, I wanted to know what other possibilities explored outside of the...
So, this, the state-approved curriculum, there was only three options that we had to choose from. And so, in talking and meeting, we had felt that this one was the best, especially like, just to point out, even the videos and the multimedia perspective of what they give us to enhance our lessons was very impressive.
One more question. Is this curriculum sustainable or will there be ongoing costs beyond the adoption?
Yeah, that's a great question. So far, we really like the curriculum. It'll be for seven years. But with the online component, anytime they put a new update, then we're going to automatically get that update with the curriculum adoption that we're putting forward.
So, is there a cost to purchase the licenses each year or is it just a one-time cost? Because sometimes when you buy licenses, you have to renew those licenses every year. And it's usually like a per-student cost.
It is a per-student cost and it is a one-time, six-year license. But I also should say...
Will you say that one more time on the microphone for me, please?
Yes, one more time on the microphone, that it is a per-student cost for a license, but it is a one-time, six-year license. And different from other adoptions, the teachers really felt like this was not an adoption where we needed one textbook for every student. They wanted to go with class sets and have been very reasonable. And we really only need one class set. So, unlike from our different adoptions, we'd ordered 250 Algebra I textbooks. This is a much smaller purchase. And I believe we're looking at around $80,000 for this purchase.
And again, I'm going to state this because this is going to start to come up as we talk about the future in curriculum adoption, because you are seeing more of that moving online consumable products that go with it. As you said, they're having more of that per-student cost, which saves us money in other ways to do other things to support what's going on in the classroom. So, again, I think this is one of the first steps that we're going to see as we continue to have this conversation in adoption of curriculum moving forward.
Just because I'm old and senile, I just want to get it straight in my mind. All the parents will be notified of the syllabus so that they can opt their kid out if they wish.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So, my question pertains to, so we're approving the adoption of this curriculum, but we don't have any numbers on what it cost is right now, correct?
It's going to be about an $80,000 purchase.
But we don't know for sure.
We have that in the curriculum contingency. So, as soon as we get a contract and a purchase order with them, then we'll be able to come to you for a transfer from the curriculum contingency.
Is this 612?
Correct. 612, correct. And I just want to be clear. Dr. Vickery has said it, there is a health curriculum that is K-12. And we are going slower on the K-5 approach because we want to work with not only, I'm going to say, our 6th through 12th staff, but then working with what that looks like at the elementary level with our elementary principals. And so, this is that first step as we start to look at what that looks like K through 12. So, 612 is here and then we'll start to have those conversations and moving forward with those standards, which is going to be a little bit more of a depthier conversation as we look at the health standards. So, we will keep you very informed in that process as we move forward from a K-5 perspective.
So, obviously, this is replacing an existing curriculum of some kind. Is the existing curriculum just homemade? Or I guess the question is, what is this replacing and maybe just a little... And maybe just a little bit about how much different will this be?
You're gonna take this one.
Um, it's replacing a textbook that's about 17 years old, um, and then supplemental materials that we've been using. So there's some canned, uh, curriculums in different areas like, um, anti-violence or drug units, things like that. Um, but I would say we supplement, uh, more than using the textbook that we currently have.
And that's to keep things current, basically? I think that's the health, keep things current. And, and I'm assuming that the new curriculum, at least as of next year, is current. Uh, and I, I guess I was trying to get some sense of, as a student in health class, how much different is this gonna look?
I think it's gonna be drastically different. Um, there's gonna be an online component that we currently don't have, um, unless we've created something and taken the students to the computer labs. Um, neither Alicia or I have access to, they call them cows, carts on wheels, um, the Chromebooks. Uh, so we have to rely on a computer lab being open and available for us to take our students to, um, the computers. Um, and then we will have access to a set of textbooks. Um, but I think it'll be drastically different and also a learning curve for both her and I as well.
And I think I forgot to mention the, yeah, the alignment with the high school. Right now, I just, I mean, it's kinda wishy-washy because we're all kinda teaching from different textbooks and I think with the new adoption, we're all gonna be, um, focused on the same standards and working our way up the ladder. So it'll be more, um, in line for the kids.
And that is very important because I, there is work that we need to do in regards to alignment tied to the standards. And I can, I think these, uh, these two as well as the, the, our third teacher have done a fantastic job of really looking into that and trying to do that alignment six through 12. So we're getting those pieces and then they're continuing on the high school. And again, we have to have that conversation then, what does that look K-5 leading up to the six-12? So, uh, again, the work that they have done just in that alignment piece and the, I'm gonna say the collaboration that they're currently having and I'm going to assume will continue to happen, uh, six through 12 is a very important part of the process as we continue to allow kids to learn and grow. And B, again, I'm gonna continue to say it, we want whole children that are healthy, safe, they're engaged in their learning. There, we figure out ways that they need, if they need support, that we have it and that they're challenged. And I do think in looking at the curriculum, there are some challenging pieces that, uh, is gonna be great, uh, learning opportunities for our students.
Is there a way to look at the curriculum beyond the week that?
It's spring break. You can just contact me, it's still on the table in my office, outside my office. So it's still available, we'd like to take a look at it.
And really at any point, if a parent wants to come in and look at it, we are always gonna have that option open. Uh, we want to be transparent in what we are teaching our kids. As I said, they have the syllabus, but I know that many of our teachers in my conversations with them, if there are concerns that they have, set an appointment with a, with a parent and, and have that conversation. I will also add, I had a conversation today with a parent who stayed, had some, uh, just had some questions about the syllabus and said that the, uh, you did a fantastic job of just sharing and walking through, uh, what all the pieces are. So again, I think that just gives credit to our, our teaching staff and, and how they communicate with our parents.
I just wanted to add that it is good timing, uh, as well because the health standards, we have new standards and so we'll be able to align them to this new curriculum as well.
Other questions?
I, I had a question about, it was made available, the phone call went out and it was made available a week before spring break during the business hours of the district office. Were there opportunities for parents to view it outside of that?
No, that's, that has been our standard, um, process. Um, we can work with the schools and make it available on parent information nights. Um, I'm thinking of even next week, we have a big night or it's Thursday for eighth graders transitioning. Um, we could have a table set up and offer for parents to preview it then. So I think we can create those other opportunities, but just to have a person at the table the entire time to answer questions, um, was, was important to us.
And do you know how many people took advantage of, of coming in during that week to?
We did, we had one person, a board member, come in and reviewed the curriculum. I contacted, um, some teacher friends of mine that I know are parents of secondary age students to verify, tell me you got this message, are you coming in to look at this curriculum? And I said, yeah, I got the message, no, I have no concerns. So, and it was pretty similar with our other adoptions too, so.
And I will say as a parent, I got the notification, but for me to come in during work hours is an issue. So, um, I guess I would say, I mean, this affects a lot of our students and a huge portion of our community. I, I think it's, it would be good and generous of us to make these things available to people outside of what is typically their work hours.
Well, and our work policy also says that we will, um, have a community involvement piece of it as well. So if we did, could have something, somehow, put something in the paper. We probably won't have any more people come and look at it.
And you may not, but I think it's worth.
I like the idea of doing it this Thursday at the parent, at the high school.
The other big event that we have coming up is the Talmage Health Fair. And it would be pretty easy to set up a table there, be available. Um, in the past, you're right, we have invited parents in, um, to, to take a look at the curriculum and we could certainly have that as well. But I think for the Talmage Health Fair, um, what, the week of Thursday?
April 12th, yes.
April 12th, that, um, we could make a table, um, available there for people to review it.
So you have, I guess that my question to you is, now you have options. So I, we can either move forward or again, if there are concerns, uh, we could, uh, open, uh, for this Thursday and then the following week to get some final things and we could table this and then do the final mo- vote in, uh, May. That just pushes things a little bit. Um, so I'm just looking at my two people because we do need to have things, um, solidified by June 30th. So it's really up to all of you if you, with those two options.
I, I, I'm ready to make a motion. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the health curriculum adoption as presented. But I'm gonna add that I'd like to have it, um, available for public, um, review at the Talmage, um, Health Fair. Okay. And the high school.
Which is during the case. And the eighth grade night.
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion on the floor. We have a second in that one. Second by Jerry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time. And we are at comments by individual board members. Going first, huh, Jerry?
I'm going first. I came in and looked through the books. For the most part, I find it quite well-written and easy to understand. And for me, that's pretty dense. There's a few, uh, pieces that, uh, parents may want to keep that part of it for themselves to teach their children whatever values they endorse. And, uh, that's the part where if, if it is available to parents so that they can say yes, no, or whatever, as long as they have that option and, you know, like I say, for the most part, it's, uh, very informative about just basic health, nutrition, uh, all that kinda stuff that's, that's necessary. And then a few things that maybe some people, they're, figure that's the thing that should be taught in the family. As long as they have the opportunity to look at it, go for it.
Anything else? Oh, what's going twice? Well, I just wanna thank all the staff for everything that they've been doing, all the work that they've been working on. Uh, we got through spring break, everybody had a chance to refresh, to make the push for the end of the school year.
I was hoping that I was supposed to be on the agenda today. I submitted a request and I thought that's what it was, for the out-of-state request with Ms. Jobe, um, about basketball, the basketball trip next year and I thought it was gonna be talked about today, the board meeting.
Dr. Jobe, do we, I just wanna make sure that that process has been followed before I bring?
I got an email that you knew this.
It up. Are you aware of, so here's what we'll do. I will talk with Dr. Jobe and, uh, work with the board to get that approval. Um, 'cause I'm, I just wanna make sure that we follow a process at the building level, uh, from that perspective. Yeah, we can, I, I, here's what I will tell you, we will, I will, if, if everything looks good and, and we have all the pieces in place, I can give a contingent and then we can bring it back to make sure the board approves it at the next board meeting.
I need the answer by tomorrow.
That's what, I will, I will work with Dr. Jobe to make sure that that, based off the information that I get from her, that we can do a contingent and then bring it back to the board from that perspective.
They sent an email proposal, I just didn't know if there was any in their information that needed or not, but.
So, yep.
All right. Thank you.
So will we be expected to make a decision on something we don't hear about?
So we have the ability to, I have the ability as a superintendent to give contingent and then share with you all my decision that we make, if we have all of the correct processes and procedures in place. To some degree, you guys are the formality. Um, so if you are comfortable with me, if I've read the financial pieces and all the information in place, I will then just make you up to date in the Friday report. Okay, thank you.
All right. So adoption, action items for the future meetings, adoption of the calendar for next year will be coming up in June. Additional June budget meeting. We can lane Cease. Uh, students each get on.
State law, whichever.
Had a review of the ESD contract. And can anybody think of anything else that they want on the futures list? What's going twice? And it is at this time that we're going to go into an executive session. Uh, under the provisions of ORS 192660, open meeting law, the Board of Directors will enter executive session for the following purpose, to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations under ORS 192662, item two, or section two, subsection B. And the board may return to regular session to take action on executive session discussion if needed. And with that, we are adjourned.